Good evening, and welcome to the fifth, twenty-five of the March meeting of the Planning Commission and Housing Task Force. That's Connecticut? Let's do roll call. Nick Crevoix? I'm here. Doug, right here. All okay?
Yeah.
I know Kathy's out. My neighbor Nicole's out. Megan Dupless is...
Yeah.
Dennis is here. Yep. Jay is out. This is Megan for Kathy and Dennis for Michael. And Bob Crevoix. We have Chuck Chadwick. Good. Or anybody other...
No, just the commission.
Just the commission. Very good.
Alright.
Quickly do the minutes. Get that down on the way. Also, do approve the minutes as presented. Thank you. Are you the second?
Second.
Thank you.
That's fine.
Dennis. Dennis was quicker.
Any, any questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, aye. All opposed? All abstained? Any correspondence?
None.
Very good. Then, we're gonna move on to affordable housing. We have Maria DeMarco, President of Marco Management Company here. And she's gonna teach us everything we need to know. And then so...
Say more than I ever wanted to know. And good evening, everybody. I don't know if you're aware of this, but the reason I do these presentations, I only do Old Saver because I live here. And I'm a senior salesman. So, that's why I'm here. But anyway, I run a small management company. We specialize, we have about a hundred people throughout the state. We specialize in affordable housing. And of all types. So, it's not just the 830G, which I know is something that you all are interested in and have had some developments in town. But we do all types of affordable housing. So, I don't know how much detail you want on each one. But what I did in this summary that Chris just passed out is gave you an overview of what each of the programs are. So, you can read this at your leisure, but maybe we can just go to the different, the different programs. How's that? Okay, so, the first one that, and I think we always put it first because it's my favorite. It's called, well, affordable housing is basically set up with income limits. That's the thing that is the same throughout all the different programs. They have income limits and they have rental or sale limits. So, that's what makes it affordable. There's various programs and it depends on how the development is funded. So, for the one, the first one, it's called the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And the reason, these are tax credits that are purchased by corporations. And the money gets distributed by, to each state by population. And in Connecticut, those funds are administered through the Connecticut Housing Finance Authority. They're competitive. You have to apply for them. And then if you get awarded those, they go right to your project. So, you can use those in the development of this project. And it makes it, it's the thing that makes it affordable. The reason I like this program is because there's an incentive for upward mobility. So, you move in, we build a complex that has low-income housing tax credit as the funding source. And everybody that moves in has to meet a certain income level. Okay? If they meet that income level, which we, that's where the details are. That's what we do. We check everybody's eligibility. If they meet the income level, they can move in. If five days later, they get a better job and they start making a lot more money, guess what? I don't really care. So, I've seen these programs where people have gone in and a nurse's aide is the household, you know, is the head of the household. And they're paying $500 a month in rent. And then this individual goes on and gets her education and now becomes an RN. Now, they're making over $90,000 a year in income. They're still gonna pay the low rent. What this has done is it has allowed people to move out of these units and go right to homeownership. It's the only program where I really see that happen. So, to compare this to what you may know of as Section 8, that's where the federal government subsidizes a portion of the rent. A large portion, seventy percent of the rent. The difference here is that, once a person's income changes, their rent changes. I have seen situations where people have refused to take promotions, have quit second jobs, have done all kinds of things to hang on to those vouchers because they pay seventy percent of their rent. So, that keeps, to me, that keeps, I mean, it's absolutely necessary in certain circumstances. Like most of the projects where I have seniors or disabled people, there's not gonna be an opportunity really to get a higher income. You know, when you're seventy-five and you have, you know, ailments or whatever. So, it works perfectly there. But for younger people, I think that the other, you know, the other incentive program is better. But that's how Section 8 basically works. And there's two types. There's the Section 8 voucher program that is assigned to a particular building. That's called project-based Section 8. So, anybody that moves into that building will have their rent subsidized. A lot of the senior housing complexes are that, built that way. The other is where you have a portable voucher. So, if you're lucky enough, it's like hitting a lottery. If you're lucky enough to get one of these vouchers, you can take it anywhere in the United States. The Virgin, US Virgin Islands, Puerto Rico. It's anywhere you can take this voucher and it will pay seventy percent of the rent and you pay thirty percent. Now, I've seen...
Is there, is there an upper limit?
Sure, there is. Because you can't go rent a place that the, the federal government sets what the fair market rent is. And if you have, let's say, your voucher allows you to have a two-bedroom unit. A two-bedroom in Willimantic, the voucher probably pays $700. Okay? You take that voucher and you go to Stanford, that same voucher is gonna pay $2,300. So, it depends on where you're located. And I am sure I only do Connecticut, but I am positive that if you go to other states where either the income levels are lower, the fair market rents are lower, your voucher's gonna be worth less. Okay? And if you go to Hawaii, I'm sure it's probably worth a lot more there. But that's how that one works. So, but that one, again, every year, people have to renew and recertify so that we know exactly what they, what their share of the rent will be.
And is a landlord required to accept?
Absolutely.
Affordable voucher?
Absolutely. Yep. And banks are required to accept it i- in homeownership. Some of our housing authorities, our larger housing authorities, allow you to take a voucher. And I like this program where they say, if you, if you can work, if you can show that your income is increasing, we will allow you at some point in time, there's a formula for it, where you can take your voucher and actually use it towards a mortgage payment versus staying in rental. And I really like that. But in Connecticut, there's only two housing authorities that have that program because you have to be a very large housing authority. And we don't have that many. But that's a great property. Then, we can move on to the affordable. That's the one you guys are interested in, I think primarily, is the 830G. And you have, how many projects in Old Saver 830G?
I don't know off the top of my head, how many?
I think a half a dozen, I know that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six or seven. Because I don't know if you all are aware of this, but 830G is used throughout the state. I see it used more effectively in some towns than others. I typically get hired to oversee the affordability component of the 830G developments. Right? So, in an 830G development, you'll have, let's say, if you're gonna build ten units, three of them will be set aside, right? To, to be affordable. And I usually get hired to assist the developer in that. But sometimes the developer does it themselves. So, then, in those situations, the towns sometimes hire me to make sure the developer is doing it correctly. And you did that in this town. And it was very successful. I found generally that your developers were compliant. I have other towns where the developers built it, rented it, or sold it, and then just left. They're defunct, they moved away. And now, these poor people can't sell their units, can't do anything. And the towns don't know how to administer it. So, they're on the phone calling everybody around and saying, who can do this for us? So, I've done that. And then, I've also been brought in to help towns where they have litigation with developers to, you know, figure out what they're doing. And you know, not, not, not all towns know how to administer it. So, but that's, you know, that's another, I think, good program. What we wanna know about? You wanna know more about that one?
Okay.
Then, we have what's called permanent supportive housing. And in recent years, what permanent supportive housing is, is a development where the funding source, so usually the federal government, the state government, or the low-income tax credit funder will say, we will provide more incentives or rate you higher if you set aside a certain number of units that are considered permanent supportive housing. And those units come with services. So, in other words, those units are typically for people that either have mental health issues, they have certain disabilities, or they may be just coming out of homelessness. So, they get case management services. And usually, we try to put a few of those, or developers put a few of those in each of their developments so that they can score higher and get these government funds. They work well if they have good case management. Because as you can imagine, somebody with, you know, a background that, or was just, may have been homeless for a long period of time or may have mental health or drug addiction or other needs would need the support to live, you know, independently. Alright. Then, there, then there's, you know, there's other pro, I mean, there's one other program. I don't think you have any of it here.
I'm sorry, may, may I ask you?
Sure.
To just repeat, you said that those are state-supported or state?
Permanent supportive housing. Some are state and some are federal.
Okay, so they get money into the project?
Correct.
Or the house?
Well, no. For the, usually, the permanent supportive housing isn't ownership. It's rental and they provide extra services. I'll give you an example. There's a veterans' supportive housing, the VASH. It's called Veterans Administration Supportive Housing. In those cases where you have the VASH units, the Veterans Administration pays the rent, but on top of it pays support services so that the veteran that's living there, the veteran household, can get case management and social services. So, if the rent is fourteen hundred, we, they, they might pay seventeen hundred a month. The other three hundred is for the support services. And these keep, help keep people housed that would otherwise have some difficulty. Okay? So, that's typically how it works. There's one other program that we don't see that often. It's called, it's through the USDA Rural Development. And those are a little bit different. They sort of follow the HUD guidelines. HUD kind of has the overarching responsibility for all these programs, right? So, they have what I call the Bible. It's a, it's called the forty-three fifty, and it's a book about six inches, it gets bigger every year, of all their regulations. And they change them all the time. So, that's basically the baseline. But then, every little project has a little nuance, right? And USDA Rural Development is the same. We have a couple of those. There's some in Clinton, there's some in Westbrook, and they're just a little bit different. Okay? There usually, I have one project that's in Woodbury. So, it's what's considered more rural than, than what we are. And those are basically the types of affordable housing that there is. In the package that I gave you, it showed what, I mean, it gives you, you know, overview of all of these things. But I think the most interesting thing is what the income limits are and what the fair market rents are. So, a lot of times, I go speak to communities and they think that affordable housing is just for the, the very lowest income group that they can imagine. And that's not the case. So, if you look at the, the sheet that I gave you, you can see that... Well, let me explain, let me back up. I'll explain one other thing. Usually, in these projects that are, depending on the funding source, when you determine the median income, you have two options. One is the state income, the median state income, or the municipality's state income. Some programs, 830G typically says, you must use the lesser of. So, even if you're building an Old Saver, you'll see that the median income is almost $150,000 a year. It's one forty-eight-nine. But the state income median is one twenty-two-three. So, when we're doing the calculations, we have to use the one twenty-two-three. However, there's another little caveat. It's also in Old Saver, you have IHC.
Yeah.
What the?
Incentive Housing Zone?
The Incentive Housing Zone in Old Saver says just the opposite. We will let you use the Old Saver median income because by having a higher median income, you can rent to people that make more money and you can ask for more rent, or your sales price can be higher. Okay? So, you have to know all of these things. And the devil in all of this is in the details. And that's basically what my company does. We do the administration of these for the developers or the municipalities or HUD, CHFA, Department of Housing. And it basically involves setting the rental rates or the sales price annually because of changes. So, if you sold something in 2018, you, you bought something in 2018 and now it's 2025, you wanna sell it, you gotta come back to us and we will recalculate what you can sell or rent it for. So, every year, that calculation has to be done. And the same calculation has to be done for the income of the people applying to live there. So, that's why we have to recertify annually.
If you own a house that you purchased under that program, can you rent it?
It depends. It depends on what the affordability plan that was approved by the town.
Okay.
If the town says it's only for sale, then you can always sell them. If they don't specify, you can also sell and rent. But your question is, or the answer to your question is, you're correct. You still have to apply all the restrictions.
So, it would have to be these restricted rents?
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. Yeah. And they're usually deed restricted for four years.
There's two more fine points that I don't wanna mess things up. But some of the affordable housing you've described, if it's land-based rather than voucher-based, has a sunset provision. That the IHC at Saver Station was restricted for twenty years. And then the cap comes off.
Right.
And the eight-dash-thirtyGs were for forty years? And then the cap comes off.
Right.
One, the station was occupied in 2017. So, we're already eight years into twenty. So, the can gets kicked down the road a little bit, but... And the other thing that I didn't see here is that some of these land-based affordable things are deed restricted. Otherwise, they don't count for the state purposes.
Correct. Absolutely.
The state purpose doesn't really matter because it doesn't...
That's right. And nobody...
There's nothing we can do about it.
And then, and honestly, nobody monitors it. I mean, like I said, your town does, but a lot of towns don't. So, you know, it has to be deed restricted. But you are correct. But I will also say that I have seen caps as low as fifteen years. So, it depends on the municipality and it depends on what they agreed upon at the time those were built.
Right.
And what I'm finding in Fairfield County in particular is that a lot of people, well, not recently, but in the past years, we saw a lot of investors coming in from New York buying these restricted properties and then just waiting it out until the, the restrictions came off. And then their rents went from like $700 to $1,500 overnight. And, you know, that's, that doesn't really sit well with me, but that happens. That happens. So, you know, I like to see, some of our projects have ninety-nine-year restrictions.
And so, the point is that we can write into regulations...
Absolutely what you want.
Whatever works best for Old Saver.
Correct. Correct. And I've seen it all over the place. So...
Aside from eight-dash-thirty-G, which is...
Yeah, right. Exactly. Exactly.
So... And I think the thing too is, a lot of the towns have that ten percent goal to get out of, from 830G. But if you look at Saver Station, I mean, we're already halfway through. So, it's almost like, I'm saying, kick the can. It's, it's almost unobtainable unless you're building so many units so quickly to get that ten percent and then manage that with the existing housing stock in the community, you know, and trying to get that number, thirty percent. It's, it's hard. The ten percent, and I think that's why the town really hasn't used the ten percent as a goal because it's really an unachievable goal. And Saver Station, you know, is a perfect example. In ten years, those units will all just roll off and will need to buy, or build more affordable units to get to the ten percent.
Unless you can persuade the owners at that point in time that this is the right thing to do. And I've seen owners that have a different mission. Not-for-profit owners, which there are quite a few of them that build these, their mission isn't necessarily to, to make the biggest bottom line. And they will continue to go beyond the initial period and continue to keep them affordable. So, that's another, you know, option. I don't, you know...
I think it's tough, but...
It is.
It is to find those owners.
It is. It is. And mostly, they're in larger cities. So, like, we have a lot of them in Middletown, Bridgeport, Hartford, Stamford, New Haven. Some in Waterbury in Britain. That's not it. You know, the bigger town, the bigger cities. Yeah. So, now, it's for you to step. What else do you want to add?
So, on the back of what Chris handed out, if that's the rent and you compared last year to this?
Yes. And they've gone down. Which I had to have discussions with HUD and the major players in this area. There's a company that administers most of the HUD vouchers throughout the state. And they were saying how, when I first got this, when I first saw that the rents actually went down, I said, wait a minute. Aren't you guys out in the market? I mean, all the rents of, everybody I talked to, the rents have gone, you know, sky high. But HUD, in their wisdom, in just about every town, reduced the rents. Said the fair market rents in twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five went down. And I can't, I can't believe, I just, and there's nothing I can do about it. They publish it and stuff. There's no negotiation, there's no nothing. This is what they are. Period. That's it. Which is, like I said, very strange to me. But, so, every year, they will come out with new numbers. Usually, some of the numbers are published early in the year, like January, and then others are published. Income limits, for example, won't be published until April. So, for 2025. So, for the first four months of the year, you're using twenty-four numbers. So, we'll see if those change at all. But they, they're pretty, they stay pretty close. So, I think that that was it for me. And then, what we did in our, in our papers that we handed out was we provided a set, a sample calculation. And it just includes a lot of different factors, right? It's pretty simple. This is in the statute. And you just have to plug it in and it changes annually. And some of the pushback that I get from developers is that the, all things being equal, the thing that makes the, the biggest difference is the interest rate, right? And they all call me and say, oh, no, I can get a better, I can get a mortgage cheaper than that. And they, you know, tell me I have to use theirs. That's not how it works. The state publishes a rate and that's the rate I use. Just like when they publish the rate that we have to pay on security deposits, the state tells me. It's not like I can make it up. Okay? So, that's when developers say, no, no, I can get them a cheaper rate. Nah, doesn't work that way.
I did have one, one question. So, you, you, you work all around the state, you see all kinds of different things. Your, your experience kind of with our, our local market. You're, you know, this is such a complex situation, such a challenging kind of riddle to solve. There's nothing obvious that we're missing. There's nothing that you look in your experience and say, oh, Old Saver should really do this. We have a perfect situation for that.
No.
No? Alright? It's just...
You, you don't have a lot of developable land. You have septic and sewer issues a lot of places. So, no. Unless you start changing, changing zoning where you're gonna allow high-rises and, you know, change the whole design.
Nature.
Yeah. Yeah. No. There's really nothing. And I gotta say that Old Saver is one of the few towns where you're, you really welcome this. And this is just anecdotal. It's not, I can't prove it out. But in my experience doing this for, you know, almost forty years, the wealthier the town, the more receptive they are to this. And you would think the opposite. That doesn't kind of make sense, right? You would think lower-income areas would be more receptive to having affordable housing. Yeah. Yeah.
So, not to get ahead of things too much, but what we heard from CHFA is that with their limited resources, they embrace projects of thirty units and more. And if Old Saver were to express a desire for middle housing, developments of six to ten units per acre, then, total, well, not density, but total, CHFA is not likely to be so interested in those because it's more resource-intensive from their perspective. So, what do you see from developers and CHFA types as being a possible gold, middle housing?
Yeah. I will tell you this, that they're absolutely correct. Because in my business, the magic number, I gotta make all these projects work, right? So, based on the restricted rents and income levels and all of that, the magic number for me is forty units. In a forty-unit complex, I can make it work. We'll cash flow, we'll have enough money to make the project viable for the entire restricted time. Not a problem. In projects, so, they're saying thirty, I think that's probably doable. Projects that I've seen all over town and they're doing, they've said that because in years past, they have done six to twelve-unit developments. They're all failing. They're all failing and I'll tell you why. You cannot cover the costs over those few numbers. So, if you have...
They mentioned those, but they didn't tell us the whole story.
Okay. Let me tell you, I'll give you an example. I have a project that was an old parochial school. I won't mention the town. The church owned it. They wanted to, you know, they're good stewards. They wanted to develop it into affordable housing. Family affordable housing. So, the units are large, three and four bedrooms. So, there's not a lot of them. Well, fast forward and it's failing. Well, uh, fast forward and it's failing. And there's only twelve units. And it's got an elevator. I can't spread the cost of the elevator. If you have, you know, twelve units or fifty units, same cost. Insurance, basically the same cost. You know, taxes might differ a little bit, but the same, you have to go through the same steps, whether it's four units or forty. So that's why we tell you that.
Right. So from, from the zoning commissioner perspective, that's not zoning. So it's not zoning's fault.
Yeah, correct.
So the, the talk at the state level is that zoning has to be fixed.
No, you can't.
It's not gonna change anything. If zoning were to do it the way they were.
I agree. And in, you know, especially in towns like yours where you're amenable to this, you want to do this, you wanna have affordable housing. What can you do? You can't change the, the layout of the town.
And the project hasn't been accepted, as, as we filed, to last. Otherwise, you build something and that.
And now, exactly, exactly. So that's what you're up against. So it's really hard. I don't know how you're gonna do it. But then I also see communities that are larger towns, that have a lot of land, that are do everything in their power to get out of it. And I don't know. I don't know why that is. I don't know if there's the fear of not understanding what affordable housing is. I've been to councils like yours and commissions like yours where they say, we don't want those people. Or we don't want our town to look like that town. Wha- wha- what are you talking about?
It doesn't have to because. You can make it so you can get affordable housing, that doesn't look like that.
That fits in your community. And like I said, in, in most of the places, I mean, we have housing, affordable housing in Westport and Canaan and in a lot of very affluent towns. And it, it's right in with the community and they're beautiful and you wouldn't know any different. I mean, look at Ferry Road. Do you know where Ferry Road is? You know the, the low-income apartments there? You don't know, we managed those. You don't know the amount of times I get phone calls for people looking to buy a condo there. And it's affordable housing. And it's beautiful. And it's still beautiful.
It's what we did.
And that was first occupied, what, twenty twelve?
That was, yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's.
First one, or one of the first ones.
Yeah, exactly.
And that's done by the same people that are doing the Wellington and Met.
Correct.
Now, Hope, Hope did forty-five Ferry Road with the town.
I believe Hope's in Wellington.
Hope is a partner.
Oh, okay, I thought.
Yeah, yeah. The group that's doing the Wellington is.
They're instrumental in the creation, but it's op- op- it's operated by the Women's Institute from New.
No, not, no.
Not anymore?
No, we love that.
Oh, okay. That changed, huh?
No, the Women's Institute was the, their development consultant. The Women's Institute is defunct, they're no longer around. We managed it.
Okay.
From the day it was, the doors opened. And I gotta tell you that that's a really successful project. That project has, um, had people, two or three households that have moved out to purchase homes. And we have fifty percent of the people that live there are the same people that first moved in. Yeah. So, and the other people that have left is because they've either gone to a nursing home or passed away. So if you maintain them and you build them right and they look nice and people don't move, where are they gonna go?
Yeah.
Right? So if they wanna stay in town and they want their, to raise their kids in town, there's not a lot of choices, as you know. So our apartments there, the highest one is renting a three-bedroom for eighteen hundred. Uh, one bedroom over at Saybrook Station, Saybrook Station is twenty-five? And you get all those same amenities as you do, you know, regardless of where you live in. So.
May I ask you to elaborate? When you said that HUD said that rents had gone down? I mean, were these national figures?
No, they do it by zip code.
Oh, so.
They do a study, yeah, they do an annual study. And they give us the numbers. I don't know who did the study, but I think that they need better lessons because I'm not seeing rents going down.
Well, the other concern is, of course, the trend has been for the population in Connecticut to be contracting or.
Decreased, cor- correct.
And, um, so I, you know, I, I wonder if that's part of the trend.
I don't know, but like I said, we are, you know, we're mandated to use those numbers. I mean, different programs have different rent and, uh, sale number calculations. But generally, everybody looks at, hey, what did HUD say the fair market rent is?
Do you know if it went down universally or?
In just about every location except for a handful in Connecticut. And, but I will say, in some cases, I have a project in Plainfield, Connecticut, which is very low income. The, the market rent, we also do our own studies. So we'll call up, there's not a lot of rental options there. But, uh, we'll call up and we'll see, hey, what are these places renting for? And in that area, a one-bedroom is going for the, the seven, high seven hundreds, eight hundred a month. HUD is paying us a lot more than that for that project-based housing that we have. So anybody that moves into that housing, the rent that we collect is much higher than what the market is. And there's no, really no rhyme or reason to some of this stuff. It's just the way it works.
Do you think it could be impacted by accessory dwelling units? A little bit?
Yes. And I've seen some communities do that, especially in Fairfield County. Where, um, they, you know, they have larger homes acreage and, you know, they can do it. They're putting in the units and they're, I think Waterford might be doing that too. They've now allowed.
So, so we opened it up, we always allow for attached, we opened it up for detached. So in, I'm just texting anybody, I'm looking at the numbers on my phone. But we have seventy-nine right now, sixty-nine attached. We've had twenty new since the zoning regulation went into effect in twenty twenty-one. And I wonder if that has some impact.
Well, the only way to find out is if, well, if it's rented, I mean, if they're rented, you could ask what, what are the demographics of the renters? And then you could, no, you have to put deed restrictions on them to make them count. But you might, look, I have towns where they have, um, trailer parks, okay? And they've been successful in saying that because the rents are so low for those, that those should count as affordable housing. And some do. And there's not really deed, there's deed restrictions, I think, but I'm not sure. And then I don't think the town's ever checked, to be honest with you. Cause I've seen one where the, it was supposed to be restricted to people, uh, sixty to an older. And then they pass away and now some, their grandson is, you know, their twenty-two-year-old grandson is living in the trailer. Like, I know this, but who checks? You know, I'm not managing that trailer facility, so.
Well, we don't manage that part of it, but I just had someone recently, it's someone who's lived in town, can't live on their own. The children are building an accessory dwelling unit. The other unit will go for sale or rent. So now you're creating a little bit of movement. And the plan is, if something happens to the, the older individual, that the ADU would be a place for their daughter to live. So, you know, so it must have some kind of an impact because you're freeing up a house, you're, you know what I mean? You're getting, you know, and that's what you're saying, there's a little bit of a difference. I mean, I, I don't know what these ADUs go for. I know some of them are very, you know, maybe for two thousand dollars. But it, it's showing some movement. I think the more you build, the more you're moving things around, that you're freeing up a house potentially that could have been, you know, moved someone else in or, or so, so, I don't know.
The houses aren't renting for as much as they were. The housing rentals are going down.
Are they? And so that bears out what HUD is saying is that the whole rental market is going down.
And they're sitting on the market floor. But I also do a lot with, uh, Yale interns in New Haven, and that's a pigeons market. That's four thousand dollars for a two-bedroom.
That's why you see all the development in New Haven. Yeah. And I, I will say that at the Wellington, we had some rules that were considered market where the rent was not fixed. You didn't have to have a certain income. We didn't care what you made or, you know, whatever. And we had a lot of nurses come from Yale and say, you know, a couple nurses wanted to share a two-bedroom or whatever. And even then, the rents were reasonable.
Right.
For, you know, for that area. We tried to keep them low. So even the market rents at that project were like twenty-five hundred.
And I've noticed that MetroStar, they built the big complex in Rampford. And they have a bunch in New Haven. They tend to be more on the reasonable side than some of the bigger complexes.
It depends. You know, it depends on the motivation of the developer. Like I said, I have a lot of, uh, not-for-profit developers like Hope that wants their mission-driven and not-profit driven. If you can get those kind of developers interested, but like I said, there's nothing you guys can do here. You know, you can't add another story to Old Saybrook, you know? You'd like to duplicate it, but you can't. What are you gonna do?
We'll take over Westbrook, we'll just take over the land.
Can you talk just a little bit about your experience with deed-restricted units for sale? I, I think we've always had this focus, everything here for the most part, other than just everything's apartment, apartment, apartment. Um, we have a development that may have some, a combination of rentals and places that you can purchase, which I think is great, but we've always had this focus here because the majority of our developments and our units are rentals.
So they're, they basically operate the same in that whoever is gonna administer the affordability component of that development, you have to follow the same rules, right? What happens is that, I'm not offending any realtors by the way, but the realtors don't understand this program. And I'm also finding out that a lot of attorneys don't understand this program. So what we're seeing is people will go in, so, um, there's the one that's half in Westbrook.
Ethan's Land.
Ethan's Land. Okay. So I'll give you that example. Um, those, there's just eight units, I think. Yeah, four and four. Four in Westbrook, four in Old Saybrook. And.
On the Westbrook line?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's two in Old Two.
Okay, well, there is, yeah, maybe.
And five.
Wasn't it eight units total?
I think it's eight. I thought it was.
Six, yeah, six.
But the restricted ones, I'm not talking about, I'm, I'm talking about, it's, the whole complex is eight. Four in Old Saybrook, four in Westbrook. And then each had its own couple. And when it went first went for sale, the set aside units, the units that had to meet the affordability complex, were a hundred thousand dollars less and looked identical to the other units, which is what you want, right? You wanna make them all look the same, basically. So, great, the people that were lucky enough bought those. And then time passes and now they want to sell them. So the first thing they do is they say, well, I wanna get, you know, what's the, what's the asking price? They'll go to a realtor and they'll say, hey, these are selling for five hundred thousand dollars now. And that's what they think that they're gonna be able to do. And then lo and behold, somebody, usually me, because if I'm involved with the project, I say, wait a minute, you can't do that, you have to come to me. So then I do the calculation and I say, well, you bought it for a hundred and fifty, you can sell it now for a hundred and eighty. But my neighbor sold his for five. Sorry, this is how the program works. And then who you sell it to has to meet the requirements, the same requirement. So I had a situation, I was telling you about that before, where I had a young man, um, buy an affordable unit over in Rotten near the base and, um, immediately put thirty thousand dollars into the house. Bought the house, it was affordable. Did an elaborate yard, upgraded, finished the lower level, beautiful. Three months later, he was deployed to another state. And tried to sell the house, came to me and said, well, I put thirty grand into it. And I said, sorry, you, you can't, you, you've been here three months, you're not getting one, any of that thirty thousand. You are not getting one thing. They fought me, they took it all the way up to the state, got attorneys and everything. They swore that they were never told about the restrictions. It's in your deed, you know, the attorney should have told you. Um, it, it was settled out, you know, it was not a problem, but I learned from that experience. So when we administer these programs, and I verify people and I say, okay, you're, you're qualified to buy this condo, this home or whatever. And I say, please sign this document. The document says, I understand the restrictions. I've got, I know the statute, I know that I will have to comply with these regulations. Because I'm not going through that again. And I was shocked because with the, the case with the serviceman, I said, you're, that your lawyer didn't tell you, no, he didn't tell us. He didn't really understand the statute. So that's, it gets very, very confusing. So I always tell everybody, get somebody that understands it. I mean, you're lucky because in town, you have, you know, me, I, I know this and Chris can always call me, but, um, who's the attorney we use? That knows this in and out.
Ed Casella.
Ed Casella, thank you. So Ed Casella is really good with this stuff too. And he's done a lot of the affordability plans. But I don't find that many attorneys around that know it in and out like that. You know, it's not an everyday thing.
That's part of the problem. And that's why agents don't understand it is because you don't come across it.
Yeah, exactly. It's not an everyday.
No.
So is that ca- calculation of what percentage or what the amount that they can accrue, is that a set formula? Is that something that you could share?
I didn't, it's in your package.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. It's the. We do one for maximum rental, but it's the same formula for sales. And it gives you just a, a sample of what all the components are.
Or to, to purchase, to, as you say, to purchase if you were to resell it.
Right, there's a calculate, it's, it follows the big similar outline. Alright, so you would have to use the state, the first step is to determine if you're gonna use the state median income or the municipality median income.
I think all it's like about setting the price of the house.
Yeah, setting the price.
There is a calculation and it's updated every time you go to sell it. So if, um, I get new figures usually at the beginning of the year, right? So I get new numbers. But I, at the time of the sale, I have to go back and redo these because I have to find out what the taxes are. So if the taxes have changed, that goes into the formula. If the interest rates.
It's a big.
It's a, yeah, it's a lot of work because you have to get.
Just the percentage or year.
No, 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 no.
No, I know the one that I was working on at Redwood Commons. It, the price changed because the interest rates went up. So the price came down.
Yeah, exactly.
So you could actually be in a situation, and you checked me on like what I'm gonna say, that you actually are selling it for less than you bought it for.
Correct.
That doesn't sound like a deal.
No, I know.
But it's a deal when you go to buy it, that's all you can.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. And in the case of the, one at Redwood Commons, that was a poor closure.
Um, no. I know. I did the calculations. I mean, like I said, I'm basically the only person that was, you know, my company's like one of the maybe two that do this.
I only thought two, yeah.
Yeah, exactly. So. But it's in there. But if you, you know, you ever have any questions, get to Chris and we can do a calculation for you.
No, I know, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Can you make your house affordable?
It, it's just, it's complicated and, you know, you don't get an eight thirty G for a year or so, then all of a sudden, you're like, what's the median?
Yeah.
And, and I think the one thing I learned out of the audit with the affordability documents that I didn't realize is depending on how it was written. If it could be the state median or the area median, which, you know, and this situation here, you've got about twenty-three thousand dollar difference. So now, you know, the next time we see one that goes through where we have that option, you know, we really kinda need to pay attention to it. And I mean, I understand the developer too has to make their numbers work. But I didn't know there was an option. It was just kind of, okay, you go through the formula, the attorneys review it. They write up the, the documents. So it's definitely.
Yeah, and it has an impact on either the rental amount or the sale amount. So you really have to pay close attention to that. And you have them here in Old Saybrook, you have one of each. And you have them here in Old Saybrook, you have one of each, you know, or a couple of each, so. Well, we learned, yeah. And now there's a new uh program that I have yet to. Manage and it's the housing that they developed, it's called workforce housing, that has a whole nother set of. Requirements and there's a couple towns that are doing that. Hartford has really. A couple of developers in Hartford have done this where they, the restrictions are less cumbersome. But they get some tax incentives from the municipality to set aside. Some what's called workforce housing, but they don't have to go as low as. You do in some of these others where you have to go down to either thirty percent, twenty percent of AMI. Those are all at the eighty percent level. Eighty percent is pretty high. So if you figure the rent, I mean, the. Median income in Old Saybrook is one forty-eight, nine. Eighty percent of that is still pretty high, right? So if you have the eighty percent restriction, it's not that bad. Developers can work with that. It's when you have the really low set of sides that makes it difficult.
Yeah, the interesting thing too is one of the actions when the Affordable Housing Plan, our Affordable Housing Plan was adopted. Was to modify the regulations to have detached ADUs with income restrictions. And I mean, there's no way we could ever manage. You know, trying to figure out, I mean, a homeowner to go through with the, the number of accessory dwelling units we have, I, it would be a full-time job. And to, to do that, and a lot of the, the great ideas we've had and people have over the years, it's sometimes, it's just so complicated. You know, it makes sense when you say it, but when you actually go to apply it. You know, imagine, I mean, we go through with the units that we have, just trying to. Every five years is an owner occupied, we do a renewal, trying to see if it's still there just to account for it. Never mind having to say, okay, how much is your rent? Are you following the deed restriction? It's, you know, is it. Worth it, you know, is it better to have more units and hope that you get some naturally kind of occurring affordable because people aren't gouging the rent? And I don't know.
So I was very cumbersome, I can't imagine you trying to administer. For, what did you say, at eighty? And then you're, it's invasive. I mean, really, because. At least people know that if they move into like a, a ferry crossing, right? They know that every year you've gotta provide me your income, your tax return, your bank statements. They know that that's a part of the program, that's why they get to pay a lower rent and they abide by it. But how do you do that in eighty individually owned? Who's gonna monitor that? You know, I mean.
When they sell. How do you, you know, how do you, you know, it's hard enough to go through the, the apartment buildings and the condominiums that have those restrictions trying to. Explain, you know, to every buyer coming in, oh, where it's an EDU, but it's permitted. With this restriction, I mean, it's, it's a full-time job and, and like you were saying, I think. To put that burden for just one unit, it's so much work.
But I don't think you'd get that many requests to build them.
I, I agree.
That's exactly right, because I wouldn't do it.
I wouldn't either. Plus it's an encumbrance on the property and the next person. May wanna rent it to their grandmother and they can't because you have to advertise.
Right.
You know, beyond the community.
That's one.
Oh, it is? I didn't know that.
Yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of changes coming down the line. So that's one of them. We no longer have to affirmatively market. That was a very recent. Administration change, you know, and. In a way, I'm not that upset about it because it was just an additional step that really didn't. Garner a lot of results. And what that meant was that I would have to do an extra step that cost. The developers money and cost us a lot of time, which is where I'd have to look at a census tract. And see who lives in that census tract. So you build. A complex in an area, I'd have to find out exactly the census tract that you built it in, then I'd have to find out who lives there. Through the census tract and the US Department of whatever, the Census Bureau. And then if we found out that most of the people that live there were of one group or another. I would have to market to the groups that weren't there. So if it was all Caucasians, I'd have to, you know, market to non-whites. If it was all Hispanic, I have to go to outside of that community. And it just made no sense. In a lot of cases. I mean, I understand opening it up and not discriminating and saying anybody that wants to live. In our community is welcome. I love that idea. You know, make diversity is fabulous. But to add that additional step, because what I have found. Is that people wanna live where they're comfortable, where they can go to their churches and go to their grocery stores and live near. Their relatives and do the things that make them feel like they're welcome, right? So to outreach, it, you really weren't pulling people in. So when people say, well, we're afraid we'll get people from like. Uh, I often hear, well, we don't want people coming in from New Britain. And I'm like, wow, you know, I, I, I just don't get that kind of mentality, right? They're not gonna come anyway, they don't wanna live in your town. It's like, what do you think? Just because we advertise, they're all gonna rush in? They're not gonna rush in, so don't worry about it.
Well, there were people in town that thought that would save the junction.
Oh, God. And I've never seen it happen. And I have seen, I've seen the towns that struggle to keep. To, to keep low-income housing because they need the services, they need the teachers, they need the teacher's aides. They need people for the fire department, you know, um. Let's see, town, Norfolk, very low-key, but very, very wealthy town, right? They struggled and they were one of the few towns that I worked in, they developed small eight. Unit development. And when they didn't have enough money. They, they didn't get enough money from the municipalities, at a town meeting, they stood up and said. Okay, how much can each of you contribute? And I was shocked. That they wanted the housing so bad that various people in town just said, okay. You can count on me for, you know, five hundred thousand. I mean, I was like. Okay, I'm, I'm not seeing that. But I've also, in Westport, I've seen people donate mansions. Mansions, because kids didn't wanna, you know, they can't afford to operate them and so they give it to a not-for-profit. The not-for-profit changes it into affordable housing. And, you know, so, yeah. It's amazing. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know if there's people in uh, since the area where Catherine, Catherine's.
Federal?
Yeah, maybe there's some places in Federway. Any other questions?
Oh, that was very interesting.
Thank you.
You sure? Okay, alright, great.
Appreciate it. Educational.
Yeah, anytime.
I'll talk to you soon.
Yeah.
And our next guest speaker is gonna talk to us about Housing Task Force Status Report, Christina Kostas.
So. The purpose is, this agenda item is really kind of a check-in. So we've had a lot of speakers, we've had a lot of meetings, we've had a lot of discussion. But circling back to the Housing Task Force where, which was established in August, we do have a deadline. Um, for some time in the spring to report to the Board of Selection or Progress. So I didn't have a chance to finish it, but we, we have done quite a bit, even though it doesn't, it seems like we've been doing a lot of education. So um, since we started, um, we've had meetings. Pretty much, at the first we said it would be the first few months. Uh, we've been having meetings almost twice a month. On some type of an educational um matter, speakers, folks like Maria Chaffa and so forth. Um, never mind the educational. Materials that have been spread through between. Things that I've given you, things we found for each other. Um, we did um, create a housing resource section. On the website, I do want to tell you some things did not go on there because they're copyrighted. So you may not see everything that may have been forwarded or emailed or printed out because of that. Um, and we've also saved a number of these presentations to the Land Use Education. Website and there's just a little link on there, it says Housing Education, I have a few more I need Larry to upload. Um, but out of this, we, we've talked about a number of different things, we've kind of gone all over the place. I think we've all had some interesting and great ideas. So where I think we are is it is, we have a lot of actions ongoing, even though we've been spending a lot of time. On education. So I just kinda wanted to go through. What we've discussed and what you've tasked me with, and I do have some additional paperwork for you. Um. So the one thing that I do have for you, at one point, you had asked for a comparison. Um, between eight thirty G. And the incentive housing zone. So between density qualifications, regulations, I can just kinda pass these around. I didn't wanna bombard you with your packet um, of materials. Uh, so. Um, that's one thing I did get completed for you. Um, one of our discussions was to promote the accessory dwelling units. Um, so from that meeting, which we still have quite a bit to do, we talked about educational articles for Saybrook events. Educational flyers for ADUs. Um, and working with Rivercog to disc- discuss regional ways to promote the ADU. I did meet with Megan. Um, for Rivercog, we did start that discussion. I don't know if we necessarily need to go a regional approach. Um, and, and I think Megan kinda came to that, we came to that conclusion. Um, so at some point. Unless someone wants to write some articles or some public outreach, that's on the to-do list for me. Housing outreach to the public, that was brought up during one of the meetings, when are we gonna talk to. The residents of town in the community. And with that, those tasks were to. Um, review the survey questions and results from the Affordable Housing Plan, which I did distribute tonight. And then Sarah McAlwicky, who was your clerk, but still working for us part-time. She went through and we discussed the survey and she's been helping me with some questions. So one of the things that you asked for. Was to have a survey and. One of my thoughts was, well, we took the survey last time and it says, do you know the income limits in your community? Or how, you know, what the average income is. And you just hit the answer wrong, so the thought was to have a survey where it would have a little bit of a fact. Even if you answered the correction, uh, or the question right. So we're looking at a platform that you would answer the question. And then it would give you a little housing fact that maybe someone who took the survey other than saying, my income level is this, I live here, I own, I rent. And go through, that may have a little bit of an educational component. So, some homework. Here's some draft questions that um, we came up with and the thought was. Maybe to have the survey a little bit different than the last one or some of the typical ones, and Megan will email this to you and Mike and everyone who's not there. Um, and we don't need to go through this now, but maybe for our next meeting. Is, you know, some of the things I think through our meetings, one of the things was. Um, and we talked to social services, how many people taking this survey have Husky, SNAP rental assistance or heating? Try to learn a little bit about the people who are actually taking the survey versus their age. Um, you know, which, which do you think would be the best option for a home? So this was a little bit different than a normal survey and the thought was. If we could do this whole interactive component, that people may learn something new that they may not. Um. So if you could take a look at that and then we can discuss this.
It also might make them more engaged and willing to complete it.
Yes, that's what I. Um, so the other part of that too is we discussed. Uh, I got quite a list here, so this, uh, we discussed for. That educational meeting, so right now you have a draft, we need to finalize it. Uh, we need to kinda come up with a deadline, we could talk about this at the next meeting. Obviously, post it to the website, publicize it. Um, our last survey that we did for. It may have been the Housing Plan or National Hazard Mitigation, we had QR codes, we've been all over town. For the uh, last housing survey, we went to soup kitchens, we went to hotels, we went to. Places, so we plan on doing something similar. Uh, we did offer the survey last time in English and Spanish, you did not get one. Response to the Spanish survey, so I think we need to think about if we wanna have it translated to another language. Spanish or some other, just kinda throwing that out there. Um. The other thing was, we decided we were gonna have a. Public outreach meeting where you wanted a PowerPoint prepared and if. If I'm not supposed to be following through on all of these, this is what's going on behind the scenes, behind your education. Um, this was a kind of a hybrid. Um, charrette where we would have different photographs of, you know. If you would like to see new housing, would you like it to look like this or this? Or this is what we allow, do you think we should allow more of this or that? So in addition to having that as a PowerPoint presentation, we thought it might be interesting to add that into the survey. So you can look at some of those housing types, even though it may be repetitive. Um, I'm finding and, and I know Megan has been doing a lot of work with Rivercog and Thrive and Public Outreach, I think people are getting a little burnt out. Um, and they're taking, I think more people are responding to the surveys than spending another evening out. That's just my thoughts and Megan's muted, but she's.
Hundred percent accurate.
So I, I think there's a little bit of meeting fatigue going on and we have a lot going on. So um, that's something that is in progress. Um, and we also need to figure out where we're gonna do this, speaking topics, who's gonna be speaking, so. The first steps, I think, maybe just to kind of go through the survey, if the question, the questions, we can talk about them. Uh, maybe put some comments together, we could talk about your changes at the next meeting or new questions. Um, and you can see the results from the previous survey. Some of the things in the previous survey, I don't think much is gonna change. Maybe there'll be a big surprise. Um, so that's what we're thinking, try to do something a little bit. Different.
So Chris, you. Listening to you, I mean, there, there's a lot going on.
There's more.
A lot on your plate, it's more, so is the public meeting, the charrette type? You, you know. It sounds like we could just supersede that with the survey. I mean.
That, that's really.
Just to kind of manage workload and, you know, and I don't wanna jump ahead, but I read all the responses in the survey and I think. You know, when you do a charrette like that, you're gonna have fifty-fifty. Some people want this and some people want that and. I think if you get just as much information, probably in a more controlled manner with the survey, so.
That's.
That's the way I would leaning is not do the.
Also add that Rivercog just received a um, technical assistance grant from DOH to do some public engagement modules. And there's gonna be a visual preference part of that, so that might be something that we can put together. Um, that can be used later as well.
So I guess I need to know where the commission's going because we're gathering pictures and trying to, I mean, we could use it for the survey as well. I, I mean, maybe.
I would lean more towards just the survey rather than a public meeting, because I think we are getting burnt out on public meetings. Didn't you have one Monday night?
Last Monday was for sure.
And how was that attended?
I would say. There, there was a number of people online too, so that's the one thing that we did.
Yeah, if you're gonna do a public meeting, they have to be in public, you know.
Well, I, I mean, what we could do is if you don't wanna go through the, the whole charrette, is maybe we could just. Have a meeting following the survey, pick a date and invite people who wanna come in. To a meeting like this, a regular meeting, and if, see who comes in. I, I mean, you know, I mean typically. And Megan, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we see a lot of the same folks. Coming out to these meetings and they're typically board and commission members. And people there to support other boards and commissions or, or some type of a stakeholder. So I mean, we could just maybe in the survey say, if you have any questions or you wanna come talk about this, invite them to a meeting like this and not go through. The whole presentation, that's really. Your call, I'm fine with it either way.
I love that idea.
You don't want another night meeting, Megan?
So tired.
I think it's to be too much, if you have too many.
And I think I know right now. Thrive, I believe I emailed everybody, the most recent. You know, we old Saber Queens were putting flyers in the train station up and down Main Street train that helped. Promote Thrive, which we're part of, and there's just so many things going on, the SS four is going on with the region, which we're involved in. With the US Bike Group.
I can tell you, we checked in on the survey responses so far for the TOD Thrive Plan. And out of all four communities, we've only had about fifty responses. It's not ideal. It's open till the twelve, if anyone in in this group hasn't done it, please, please, please do.
And I think the thing, how long is your survey effort, it's a month and a half?
This, it's launched on February twenty sixth and it's open until the twelve.
Because I'm thinking maybe we should try a longer duration. For the survey.
The only thing I would say with the longer duration is you're going to have to send out some sort of reminder. That's available.
Well, even with the short. Duration, we're doing the same. We're having the same thing, it's.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say we have three rounds of social media, paid ads, three rounds of regular ads, three rounds of flyers going out. It's a lot.
It's a lot, yeah.
And for fifty responses.
Offer gift cards to.
We paid people fifty dollars to come to the last one and nobody came.
There was more regional staff, the one that was at the pavilion, they had gift cards, refreshments. I mean, it was really well put together, it was kind of myself, a few other planners, the Rivercog team. Some folks from Middletown, it was. Not marrying, follow into that one before her Wetlands meeting. I I mean, it was, there were three people or four people, I think, that attended from Old Saber. And and one of the comments was, do we think you can get a golf cart path from my house to the library? That was kind of an interesting one. So anyway. So I mean, we can just do, we can add into the survey. You know, this meeting and then just instead of the PowerPoint, just plug. Have a little bit more of a robust survey. Okay, so I will.
We can put a question in there about, do you want to have a public hearing about housing? That could be one of the questions.
We can't get them to attend when we're giving them a gift card.
Then people always say yes.
Okay, so I'll work on that and then we could talk more details about the survey, we won't do the charrette. The other thing that is going on that's related to this commission. And I think everybody did have interest, we had the MRDA. Outreach Murda. And that was. I forget when, but the resolution is drafted in the Board of Selectmen is going to put it up for adoption on March eleventh. So that was the program that had to do with. Potential support. If our regulations, we created an area, this is a very vague. Description within a half a mile of the train station near a downtown. And if we had certain regulations that met the criteria, we can get help. From Murda, MRDA, sorry, I keep saying Murda, I'm not supposed to say that, so that resolution will get adopted, following that. We need to go through our regulations, set qualifications and so forth. And I mean. I've been kind of doing a lot of the background work, I could bring it to the commission so we could go through all of it. I I don't know how you. I mean, how hands on you want to be with some of this stuff? That's really.
I don't want to slow things down. I think that's a key.
Well, just to refresh one memory. What does that lock us into as a town, the this? This MRDA?
So it's the Municipal Redevelopment. Authority and it's a program where it would make us a little bit more eligible, it's not locking us in, we would opt in. And it would make us a little bit more eligible if we have certain zoning regulations in place, which we do have some already. I think that it may make us a little bit more eligible for funding as well as potentially. Property owners in that, so. And that's really kind of a very bare bones basis, so there was that.
I'll I'll look it up.
Remember we had a meeting on it?
Yes, I I.
So you could. There's been a lot of meetings.
I just don't recall the details. I'm surprised that we're already advancing a resolution to pursue it, so.
Well, we can advance with the resolution to opt in, it doesn't necessarily mean we'll be accepted. But I I think we do have some qualifying points. So we had that, that meeting was on January fifteenth, if you want to revisit the video.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, I I will, thank you.
Okay, so we have that. One of the. We talked a little bit about some of the actions here, I think when we review this. I don't think we're in a position. Right now. To start looking for tax deductions for regularly, I I think we're just. There's a lot here and a lot of it, even with the accessory dwelling units to put an affordable component. Some of the things don't make sense and part of your charge is not just for. The Affordable Housing. Tasklist, but it's also just to promote housing and alternatives in general, that's why it's a housing task force, not affordable. So the one thing is Megan and I, we did discuss at one point. We met to talk about Megan and her role from the region, we talked about. Accessory dwelling units, we came up with some ideas, we talked about promoting accessory dwelling units. And flyers and different things and the next thing you know, it kind of evolved. Once we sat down in the office and met into something different. And we met, what was it, a week or two weeks ago with. Ben Lovejoy from the Department of Housing. And talked about. You know, some of the things that we had going on and. We had to do it a little quickly, so it really didn't come through here as we wrote, put together a letter. Saying that the town would like, and I sent it to you, some support. From DOH on looking at why accessory apartments in the B one mixed use apartments, it used to be mixed use accessory apartments. When this regulation or this document was prepared. To try to see if we can learn a little bit about why people aren't taking advantage of it. I suspect some of it is septic. Parking, so maybe a little bit of analysis about that, so DOH. If they entertain our. Our request, we can get up to fifty thousand dollars. In funding to do some studies in the Main Street train station area. B one and that would. Maybe that'll give us some answers and maybe that'll give us some information also to identify properties where this could work. For apartments. So it's not exactly what's in here, but it kind of piggybacks on something we have in place, I know the zoning commission. Relax the regulations and change things to promote more uses. Or promote more people using this regulation. So this may be a good way to find out what some of those stumbling blocks are, maybe our regulations too strict, maybe it's just. The soils aren't there or people have nowhere to park their two cars, who knows? So that's one thing, if that goes through, that would be another. Project there and then. In the spring, we're tasked with reporting to the Board of Selectmen, we have a little bit of flexibility, it's not like just what we've been up to and I mean, I think. We had a lot going on. It was, so we're chugging along with a number of different things, it's not as though it's been all education, but there's really a lot. To housing, you know, and initially I think we said, you know, two to three months, meaning twice a month. I mean, here we are, we started in September and now we're in March. And I think we're all learning something, including myself, every time we have a new speaker, there's always something new to learn. As we go, so we have that and then our other task was to begin the Affordable Housing Plan. Update, so I did talk to our consultant. And they're slated to have the kickoff meeting, the second meeting in. September, so you know, the one thing. That we have there, I find it's difficult is, you know, you have this plan like the Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan. And there's these requirements, they have to be adopted every five years, so by the time you go through the process. You get the document together. And this one, I think it's next summer would be the expiration, I I we're not going to go to housing jail, I think if we're a little late, but we might as well just. Now that we've got all this information, start. Getting this together, getting it in place, it's on our minds. But it's almost impossible, it has our mitigation, just to kind of jumping around, which is another five year plan. We still have not heard back from FEMA that they've approved it. And that was from October. And you know, you think about it, it's. You know, I understand there's a lot going on. But we'll get it approved and in five years, we're going to start all over again with these tasks, I wish. And I mentioned it, I wish they would just change the law so that maybe it's ten years and we have a little bit more of a robust plan and a little more time. Versus to do something versus planning for the next. Plan, so. That's my update, it was a lot, unless I missed something that we're working on or you've asked me to work on. I think. We've got, we're making progress, definitely take a look at the questions, put comments, I don't know. If you want to put comments together before the meeting and send them, like maybe you could send them to Karen and. Karen can merge them all together or send them to me and copy Karen. And we can have a discussion, you know, at our next meeting, I'll put it on the agenda with anything else you might want to. Discuss. And I think that's my affordable or my housing plan. Update.
Yeah, just to, I guess, add on, you mentioned it, we've had a lot of speakers here. There's a lot of material to integrate, but. You know, maybe we could back off the speakers a little bit. You know, work on this and. And then when we get like more of a deliverable or I don't know, a product or something, then we. Maybe bring someone in to look at it or, I don't know.
Well, part of this. When we initially started this and we kind of went through our scope. It was for a little while, we were going to have speakers, but then as we went through this, it was, oh. Well, we haven't heard from the building officials, so there's been a lot of suggestions too. From this commission or the MRDA, which is a new program, kind of getting on board on that so that. I think, I mean, if you're ready, we can kind of pause a little bit on this education, but if we need. Someone to come in, there's a lot of material on the web. And I know I've been getting a lot of emails and I mean, you could subscribe. To fifty different websites that are going to send you two housing emails every day, I mean, we also met with D-Segregate Connecticut. They have their bill going through, if that goes in, they're going to have another program. I I don't know, I think it can be a little overwhelming.
All the speakers have been good, but I'd be in favor of, I guess, tapping the brakes a little bit.
I tend to force more. Actionable, you know, survey questions. Then we might get to where we have something we need a speaker for. To get, go deeper, or right now, I think we have a lot.
So right now for your next agenda, I'm not. Oh wait, let me not say. You might have a referral. So your next meeting, which is the nineteenth, you do have, with your planning hats on, you do have a referral for. Eight thirty G application that's going to the zoning commission. Obviously Bob's going to have to say. He's not on the, he's on the zoning commission, not housing task force, and we can go through the questions.
Where, may I ask where that eight thirty G is?
It's on Middlesex Turnpike, it's where Beach Appliances is next to Oceanside Autumn. So that's a twelve unit development. I I've gone through it a little bit with the developer, I haven't really had a chance to dig in to those materials. At some point, they've gone through the Wetlands Commission, you will have a subdivision, it hasn't been submitted. Max's place for their development has started preliminary. Reviews with Architectural Review Board, so I think with your planning hats on, you're also going to have quite a few things going on. I just don't know when they're going to land and a lot of time, the advocate's like, oh yeah, I'll be here next month. And then something happens, so. We'll work on the questions, I can work. I I mean, I guess at the next meeting, if we really kind of dig into those questions. We can get the survey up, we can show you a draft with the photographs and go from there. And then maybe we'll get a grant from DOH and. We'll have another.
I have high hopes.
So where are we going to be building these small starter homes?
Well, I think, and and I'm just kind of, this is why we're having this conversation, I think it's very easy to jump into what we're building and what we're changing for regulations. I think we need the public outreach and support response first, that's just my. Two cents, I mean, and that's what I heard from you, if you want to do something different, this is your.
Yeah, no, it makes sense.
Your committee, your task force, I mean, there's a lot of ideas and every time you read a different. Article or have a different speaker, oh, we can run with that or we could do this or we could do that and then it's.
It's not easy to chase the next shiny object.
So the thought is, do we stick to this for now, not add to it unless. We get grant money or some other type of a project, I'll plug away. And then we'll kind of take a little bit of a break, but I'll work in the background to. To get things going.
I think that's right.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Anything else, anybody that? I've been looking for more to do, I just, and I don't mind doing any of that, I just. I I have this listed and I'm like, oh, I have to do this, I have to do that, and then I'm like, wait a minute, like. Do you guys realize how much we got really going on in the background?
I think we would send them out, because we don't do work. We don't see it anymore.
So are you sending this out electronically or can you?
We can send that electronically.
Okay, we can like edit it or that'd be good.
Yeah.
Track changes or something.
I kind of, I was working on it with Sarah, but I also thought giving you both at once, we just focused the whole discussion. Tonight on the questions, so that'll give us something to. Think about, little homework for our next meeting.
So is the format going to be exactly like this or is it going to be more like that original? One going back a few years, said to prioritize them.
No, the format will be more like that, but it's going to have pictures, it's going to be different, it's going to have, what kind of housing would you like? To see, you'll have four pictures and you can pick the four pictures, if you were to have duplexes in your community. Would you want them to be more of a townhouse style or a two family or an accessory dwelling, so. It it's going to be a little bit more. Interactive and visual and then it'll give you some. Facts to your responses, so you know, you answer a question right or wrong and it'd say, hey, did you know that? We have ninety accessory apartments in town and we permitted twenty and people don't even know some of these things, so that that's the thought, so if. These base questions work. We can start plugging the pictures in and then go through that.
Sounds good.
Chris, I just want to add too with my Rivercog hat on that part of our DOH. Chris, I just want to add too, with my RiverCog hat on, that part of our DOHTA grant is to fund RiverCog Extension of Staff Services for towns for public engagement efforts. So if you need extra hands, um, we will have funding to help you with stuff.
Thank you, and the one thing I did fail to mention with our DOH effort is that um, RiverCog will help us with some of our public relations and outreach through that, and Megan came up with a great idea for a map.
Yes, which I will get to.
You know, I know, it's, I don't think, no one knows about it, so, so she had a great mapping idea to kind of visualize, visualize the town and uses. So. It's kind of dangerous when we get together because we come up with more ideas and make more projects and we're like, yeah, we could do this, yes, we could do that.
Get very excited and give ourselves extra work.
We're good at that.
So we're gonna postpone the zoning districts and map.
Do you think that would be, I mean, I know it's kind of, we never get to it, or we haven't gotten to it. Would it make sense to go back and review the zoning regulations in the map and maybe more of a question and answer for everyone, or go through the districts, I, I'm just throwing it out there. I, I think for me to go through every district, which is fine. You know, we'll go through the map, we'll go through every residence district, I did make you in the beginning, a whole table about all the different zones, all the different housing, all the different uses.
That's useful.
But I kind of have heard back that there's a little bit of disconnect or a need for a review, so I guess I'll leave it up, up to you, would it make sense to do some homework and review and have a Q and A? Or, and, and I mean, that could evolve into a whole, this is what we allow in this zone, that's what we allow, but I think I don't know, our last meeting with the map.
I mean, the Q and A would be great, but everyone has to review the information and come with questions.
But I guess that's.
Some, some broad overview would be good.
Okay.
You know, maybe it doesn't have to be detailed every zone, but you know, like a broad overview and then we drill in where needed or you know, why, yeah, why old Sabrecoats laid out like it is, I mean, there's a lot of tribal knowledge, I know. We don't need to review all of it, but it's kind of evolved and, you know, where do you see it evolving or what are the options, the levers?
Differences that maybe historically have popped up that separate now the A1 from A2 to A3 or B2 from B4.
Like less of us were.
So I, I guess something kind of going on with.
The nuances.
Well, I, I think it would really be from that comparison chart, comparison of the uses as far as residential, I mean, we can talk about all the uses, which I don't think is a bad idea after our most recent map change with the B2 and the B4. But the thing is, would it, I mean, would the commission have time between this meeting and the next or two meetings, just to kind of go back and read the preambles of the zoning districts, you know, all of them, you know, to figure out, so for example, B3 allows for residential. Anything that's a business district could become affordable housing. So I, I think it's important not just to focus on the different residential zones. But, but it, you know, it's up to you, if you have the time to, to go through them and if it's not this meeting, maybe the next meeting and kind of do it more of a zoning Q and A and I can do that overview. But when I start the overview and, and I'll tell you from my experience with new zoning members, even when I rush, it ends up being, it's adding that onto an agenda with something else is gonna be two meetings, so I, that's which is fine.
What you're saying is it really needs to be its own agenda, its own meeting.
Or we can break it into two with something else, but I think if I have a better feeling, you know what I mean, as far as you've kind of reviewed some of it, gone through, just to kind of prepare that.
I think that's good, you know, we should all look it over before we commit, it'd be good if you put that right on the agenda, you know. Members that requested the review in advance.
Or I'll have Karen, so you think.
Everyone's not here.
Do you think it makes sense to do it at the next meeting or two meetings from now?
Two meetings.
Okay, just.
Yeah, because we, I'd rather people take a look at the survey for next meeting and then.
And we have the referral, okay, so we'll do that in your first meeting in April. I just left it on that because I didn't know, I mean, we're here at eight thirty, eight forty now.
Right.
Just a quick question, you said that, um, affordable housing is allowed in any business district, is that B2, B3, B4?
Yes, so if you look at, and, and that's what I think everybody kind of needs to review, if you, the eight thirty G. Eight thirty G could go in, if we don't have ten percent of the housing stock deed restricted is affordable, and that's why we were talking about, Bob mentioned how with Sabrecoats Station, in ten years, those units are gonna roll off. It happened, or yet twenty years up there, they're gonna roll off, we're never gonna achieve that ten percent.
No, but I'm, I'm.
So.
I thought B2 and B4, reading about it specifically, it says no residents in B2 or B4.
Right, but if, so I would encourage you to review go through some of these handouts for tonight, and, and this is where I think we're all getting a little, there's a lot of information to go through the the eight thirty G and incentive housing, so where Sabrecoats Station is, the apartments, that's, that was B2. So any B2 and B4, someone could buy the old Sabre Shopping Center or Max's Place and tear it all down and put housing for eight thirty G, so this is where I think, you know, we need to kind of talk a little bit.
I didn't know about that, it said no resident, it says no residents.
But the eight thirty G statute trumps that. So that's how you, these developments come through. So what you do when you have an eight thirty G application is you take all the regulations you read and you throw them in the trash can.
Alright, so.
And then.
Means we just saved two meetings.
Well, the, but the thing is, the the goal, so the only reason a commission can legally deny an eight thirty G is for public health or safety.
Not traffic.
No traffic.
Don't even think of traffic.
So when.
Not, not on the table.
We had several developments for where Sabrecoats Station is and when we wrote our reports, we would say you take a whole set of regulations, usually you say, it does not mean traffic, they didn't include this. So you say, well, the applicant should consider installing sidewalks along the road. Because if they're not, if there are no sidewalks, people will walk in the street and get hit by cars and die. You didn't say it that way, you word it better, but these are the things that you, you need to, you know, how you have to form reports and comments, you can't say, put sidewalks in because people need sidewalks to walk on and they're safe. You know, and that's kind of, you have to kind of, you know, someone will get hurt, someone will die, there's a safety issue. And, and they're, they're kind of, when you write them and you look at what you want, you know, as a planner or a zoning member, it's kind of hard to say, you know, just put sidewalks in, that's what you want to say, or you should put them in, but you have to have that public safety issue. And then you're writing this, you're like, how do I write this, what will happen if there is no sidewalk?
Thank you for the extended answer.
Don't, no problem, yeah, definitely review the eight thirty, everybody should have the eight thirty G, I think we sent that in the beginning and then you had asked for some comparisons um, for eight thirty G, which, uh, Matt Willis, uh, he just went through. This is actually more of the difference between densities, income qualifications. But I'm sure there's something, we can send you the statute again, or if anybody wants to review it, we can review it when we do question and answers.
Any questions? Anything else?
Yeah, you know, to our committee staff reports.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make this a brief, so we did have the final forshore
Did I pass this, ma'am?
Resiliency.
Yes, okay, and extra, oh, this is for.
Yeah, final forshore resiliency report, uh, the draft report, you know, we had the public meetings last week in the three towns for the four towns, the three locations. So, uh, a few residents have asked me, you know, what are we gonna do with these recommendations and, um, you know, we have prior sea level rise reports, we have the latest natural hazard mitigation plan, um, which is still pending approval from, uh, FEMA, um. So, you know, the questions come up on the status of a lot of these, like, for example, dredging South Cove is in the natural hazard mitigation plan and it's in the forshore report. So who owns that, is it Fenwick, is it the town, is it this committee, is it Public Works, so I was just gonna, you know, uh, put a straw man together, kind of a matrix, alright, here's the kind of some of the tactical projects and just talk to different people like, right, who owns this, if Fenwick volunteers to dredge South Cove, that'll put you down on the table. You know, but, and then the stages for each of these, it's, uh, you know, who owns it, is there funding? Is there a preliminary design, is there a final design, you know, this, these projects, some of them take years, uh, if not, you know, even longer, it's, uh, so we just want to kind of get something to refer to and, and to talk to, so, or to follow on that. That's all I have, thank you, anybody else?
So, just quick staff report, um, Doug can kind of give you an overview of forshore. Uh, we are in the process, we are this close to hiring a consultant for the new grant, uh, we are still waiting for our official signed agreement from NIFWIT, which we obviously need that, we're working out some of the details with our team and, um, I, I think because there's been a little bit of this meeting fatigue, we've talked a lot over the years about forshore and planning and the next step, uh, even with the consultant, they wanted to have a public kickoff meeting. And our interview team felt, since there's a lot of data collection and a lot of things going on and, and as we've just finished up one resiliency plan, we're gonna ask the consultant really to just dive in, start doing your data collection, you know, start your quality assurance, hey, there's a lot of technical things, get into that and do more of a mid-report, because I think, kind of to what Doug's saying, is we, we do a lot of planning and then we plan and then we start the next plan and we do the outreach, and I think with this particular project, at least for that area, we'll be able to come in and say, okay, you know, here's what we're finding. And, and they'll, so once that's kind of wrapped up, we'll fill you in a little bit more, we'll keep the public informed, but more through Sabrecoats events and maybe some articles and things like that versus having an, another public presentation, because as we talked about before, there's just meeting fatigue, um. And I think that's about it unless you have something for me.
Yeah, just amplifying that, it's about getting these projects more to shovel ready, yeah. You know, we've got a lot of public input, so the next outreach should be, hey, here's the design, any or conceptual design, any comments on this before we finalize it, right?
Okay.
Make motion to adjourn.
Hang on a second.
Second.
Lots of seconds.
All those in favor?
Megan, would you like me to take pictures of the three train stations I emailed you about?
Sure, that'd be great.
Landscape?
Yeah, that would, um, probably portrait to make them fit. Thank you.
All those in favor? Alright, all opposed, so you have to stay, thank you very much.